Thankful for all of you who are here tonight to take a part in this process. We will pause while Mr. Darby makes his way to the front. We have several committee meetings tonight, Special Housing Committee, Planning and Public Works, and then a Finance Committee. We're going to start with the committee meetings in the order that they were just called. And so at this time, the Chair of our Special Housing Committee, Mr. Werman, if you would take over.
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, so this is the Special Housing Committee meeting of April 24th. Members of the committee here, myself, Councilman Darby, Councilman Kibrovsky, Councilman Sasse, and then Chairman Middleton, who sits on all committees. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of January 28th, 2025.
Move to approve?
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none. The minutes are approved. And then I think the next item on the agenda is a quarterly update that I see Mr. Durant is prepared to begin now.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Werman. We're going to take an approach today that says actions speak louder than words. So if you look at this binder here, this is a binder just of initiatives that council has taken regarding housing. So sometimes I think over time it gets lost, all the individual decisions that you all make. So I'm going to take just a few minutes. There are 72 slides. I'm sure y'all are excited. I'm just going to take a few minutes to run over some history. Look at Bill's face.
Long distance, I'm on the slide.
Kidding. So the first slide I want you to take a look at, these are some major policy decisions that you all have made. You've made decisions to develop a comprehensive housing plan for Charleston County, not Charleston County Government, Charleston County. That was a huge step in setting the parameters for where we were going. You decided to allocate $20 million worth of ARPA funds in gap and infill. You decided to focus on adding to what we had done in our Critical Home Repair Program that we had been doing for years, but you added a significant amount of money to and enhanced and focused on that program. You refunded, not refunded, but refunded the trust fund from back when we did it early in the middle of 2005, 2006 by using some of the accommodations tax and setting precedent for using the tourism money to actually fund the trust fund. You developed or directed staff to develop a pilot program in land acquisition for affordable housing. You did something that I'm not sure has been done before, which is you directed staff to purchase 18 homes from the Charleston County Housing Authority before they went to market in order to preserve their affordability. And staff developed a creative program, which you're going to hear more about, with the ownership of those 18 houses. We became one of four in the nation through a Just Home Demonstration Program, which allows us to break the cycle between incarceration and homelessness. And again, one of four in the nation that were chosen to be in that demonstration project. And you approved the use of a multi-county park to allow us to do tax abatement and tax incentive structures to incentivize affordable housing. All policy decisions that you all approved. I'm not going to go through these in detail, but I wanted to, year by year, show you some of the significant things that you have done. Now, all of this is tied to projects that you've been doing for years with HUD money through community development. But if you start in '21 and you look at in HUD money what you allocated for housing affordability, you certainly allocated in that year 849,000 just out of our HUD money for those projects. You approved, you developed the, or allowed us to develop the RFP to select a consultant for the plan. You worked on some partnerships with the COG. You certainly allowed us, like I mentioned earlier, to buy the houses from the Charleston County Housing Authority, and then you allowed us to select development strategies to develop the plan. You jumped forward to '22. You can see where we closed on the houses. You can see where you took additional actions to allocate HUD funds for affordability. You also can see where you allocated ARPA money to enhance and expand our Critical Home Repair Program. And you set aside of our total ARPA award 20 million to focus on creative solutions for affordable housing. In '23, you started the process of approving the gap and infill programs that we put out for RFP, or an RFA. The first round was the 10.24 million of those five projects in gap that you awarded. I'm going to show you just a few glimpses in picture form what they look like today. You certainly allocated some home money out of HUD to focus on affordable housing. And then you voted to approve 10 more projects out of HUD funding that year. And then you finally, in that year, agreed to increase the allocation for the Sustainability Institute because as the cost of improvements for sustainable housing was increasing, community development was not able to assist people because of the cap that had previously been set. Also in '23, you will see a number of things that carry on from the previous decisions. The plan, the disposition of the houses, an expansion of Critical Home Repair, and then finally approval of some funding to the Barriers for Homelessness Demonstration Projects tied back to the MacArthur Grant and ARPA. Now, in '24, so last year, we're up to current, well, the last calendar year, you approved the multi-county park, which allowed us to do tax abatement, special source revenue credit and fee in lieu of to incentivize affordable housing development. You made the allocation of the first 4.15 million out of ATAX to be set aside for the trust fund. You awarded an additional 671,000 out of HUD for affordable housing, both repair and new construction. And then you approved some of the balance of the remaining gap and infill projects from ARPA. You jumped forward latter part of '24. You approved the final version of the Uniform Tax Exemption Procedure or Policy, which guides staff in using the tax incentives to be consistent with what you all have authorized us to do. You approved some of the land acquisition projects that were put out during the pilot land acquisition program. And then finally, you approved CDNR accepting the Disaster Assistance Program to allow housing repair for those houses that were impacted by storms. A new initiative, by the way, that had not been done before. Now, like I said, pictures really speak louder than words. Actions speak louder than words. This is a glimpse of just a few of the photos of some of the projects that you all have funded. Archer School, you can see that the individuals are actually, at this point, groundbreaking was way, way in the past. They have completed and actually had, they are now open for occupancy. You can see here Esau Jenkins, many of you might have seen this. This is where we actually held the Trust Fund Press Conference. This is for seniors out on Johns Island. You can see here 275 Hughie. This is one of those projects that we're still working on. One of the things about this gap financing is this is not easy to get these projects across the finish line. And so this is a project that we are still currently working on, but it is actively being worked to get it across the finish line. 573 Meeting, if any of you saw the visit from Senator Scott and Secretary of HUD Scott Turner, you actually were down at 180 Place, and you got to see the construction that you see in the March 25 picture where they are actually constructing that project. This was another project that we were not sure we were going to actually be able to see the vertical construction on, so it was great progress to see the movement that they've Just a glimpse into some of the other projects that you all have awarded. I'm not going to go through in detail any of them, if you have anything. You can see, though, the point of this is there is actual movement and activity happening in the community related to the awards and decisions that council has made. This is of special note, Northbridge Town Homes. These are home ownership townhomes, not far from here, down Azalea. And they are, there were 20 of them. And as of the last time I spoke with the owners and the developers, they were at 19 confirmed closings. I don't know, did they get the 20th closed? Okay. So, but the point is, these are home ownership initiatives, teachers, firefighters, the focus of the workforce that you all were hoping for in home ownership. You can see these here. More home ownership opportunities from the ground up, new construction, Baxter Street and Token Street, as well as some done through the Community First Land Trust. This was one that took a lot of effort on staff's part to work with the organization to get it across the finish line for HUD purposes. I won't go into the detail about that. Many of you heard about that. But kudos to CDNR for their diligence in working with the Community First Land Trust to help those houses get to completion. Cooper Crest Apartments, at this point, I believe we are scheduled to close tomorrow. So again, great progress on one of the initiatives for gap financing. And I want you to just take a glimpse at, I'm not going to go through all the homes because they're all at different points, but the Charleston County Housing Authority Homes, this is a perfect example of an award that you all made, what the house looked like, and now after renovations, this is as of December, I think they've actually made more progress. This was an initiative to work for rental ownership, rental for an individual that works in the vicinity of Garrison. Now, what I'm getting ready to do is turn everything else over to two leaders in the county that are responsible for making these things happen and to carrying them forward into the future. Llewella Smalls, who you all know is the Community Development and Revitalization Director. She's handled the ARPA funds, and she's handled the HUD funds. And Eric Davis, who you know is our Green Belt Director, but has also recently taken on the responsibility of housing and land management. He was integral in our land acquisition program, the beginning of all the structures for agreements for gap financing in Charleston Homes. So you are going to be in good hands as I turn this over for them to give you the real picture of what they've been doing.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
First, I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to update you on the work that we're doing in community development and revitalization. Second, I want to thank you, Christine, for that good segue into what I'm going to talk about today. I will be going into a little more detail than what Christine did about the work that we are doing. I want to explain to you how I've organized this presentation update today. When we're looking at the Strategic Plan, your 2025 through 2027 Strategic Plan, and your Housing Our Future Plan, I've laid out my presentation based on the Housing Our Future Plan and the goals and objectives in there. One of your goals is to have affordable housing preservation. We often talk about building the new houses. We talk about the new developments, but it's also important that we preserve what is already out there. There are several projects in my department, CDR, that is preserving houses. You have your Critical Home Repair Program, your Charleston Homes Program, the Disaster Assistance Program, the Wells and Septics and Utility Connection Programs. You can't live in your house if you're not getting clean water. You also have your Chodo Home Projects, which is something we've been doing for over 30 years. So the county has been invested in affordable housing, but now we're discussing it a little more. The second goal in the Affordable Housing, Housing Our Future Plan, is affordable housing creation. And as Christine said, we have the gap financing and infill, and of course, Chodo HUD projects cross this area also. Something that we don't talk about often, but it is one of your goals, that's reducing the barriers to quality affordable housing. And so I will cover two of the projects we have in that area. The first one is Gateway to Housing, and the second one is the Just Home Program. So let's start with Critical Home Repair. That's the first program or the first project in preservation that we will talk about. To date, we have repaired 256 homes. As you may recall, you have allocated $4 million to this program. The last $1 million you allocated near the end of last year, so we have those contracts in place and we're starting to do the work. But 256 individuals were able to stay in their homes because of this program. What to expect next? We will continue, we're on track to finish spending the remainder of the 1.2 million by December 31st, although I'm pushing it. I would love to have it spent by the end of this year. I want to have senior citizens in their homes with repair work completed, so that is our goal, but we will definitely have it completed by December 31st. After this update, you do have an agenda item that will ask, request for you to reallocate $91,000 from East Cooper Faith Network to the Charleston Habitat for Humanity and Operations Homes. The reason we're doing this is East Cooper Faith Network, they only want to do repair work in the East Cooper area. As you know, we randomly draw names to do repair work, and as of today, they have done all of the work of the individuals that we have already drawn names for, and there aren't any more properties that they can do work with. If we have to do another random draw, and there are homes in the East Cooper area, we will go back and do another contract with them. But for now, I didn't want that 91,000 sitting and waiting for an if happens. So right now, we're going to allocate, reallocate the funds, or we're requesting to reallocate the funds to Charleston Habitat for Humanities and Operations Homes. They work throughout Charleston County, and they've done great work with this program. The second preservation project is Charleston Homes. Christine talked about it. I won't go into too many details. It's the 18 homes that we purchased from the Charleston Housing Authority and Redevelopment, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Of the 18 homes, the very first one that's finished, I have a more up-to-date picture, but that's Garrison Street. A family of four, a husband, a wife, with two children moved into that house. And the inside, New Gate, Narrow Gate developers did an amazing job in this house. The inside is absolutely beautiful. I think back to when I saw it before they started the work, and I still can't understand how they did some of the things they did in the space that they created in the house. Very well done. There are three homes that are in progress right now. There are seven that we recently completed, or we recently executed the agreements for them. We're giving the developers 240 days to get these houses up and get people into the homes. We did have a few of the developers that were out of compliance. They're taking a little longer, but we are giving them grace. They're running into some of the same issues everybody in Charleston County is running into, finding individuals to do the work. They've got permitting issues. They've had contractors' issues. And so they are a little beyond the 240 days, but we are working with them. But we're trying to stick to that 240 days so we can get people into these homes. There are two homes that we demolished, and then there are five homes that will come to you on Tuesday. This is the third reading for the ordinance, and once you do that, we will execute those contracts and get to work on those homes. This is new money we received this year, the Disaster Assistance Program. These funds are available, $928,000, to repair homes for individuals that have extreme weather-related damage. We worked with Building Services, Public Works, and the Consolidated Emergency Communication Centers to find out what areas in Charleston County were hit most by the storms. Based on the information they provided to us, we would like to target our outreach in the Adams Run, Hollywood, St. Paul, Johns Island, and Edisto Island areas. The reason we're doing that is because $900,000 sounds like quite a bit of money, but at the end of the day, if we were to do the repair work at the max, which is $30,000, we're talking 30 homes that we will be able to work on. I'm looking at 30 to 40 homes at the end that we will be able to do repair with. And we didn't want to open this too wide and do outreach over the entire county because I don't want what we ended up having with the Critical Home Repair, where we received 1,000 applications. And as you saw earlier, so far, we've been able to help 286. So I'm trying to be intensive in the areas that we're going to work. And so after this update, you do have a request before you to approve the department focusing in those areas. Of course, other areas can apply, homeowners from other areas can apply, but I would like my outreach from my department to be in those areas. The Well Septic Tank and Utility Connections Program, this is one that's been around for over 30 years. We've continued doing this work. It was initially funded under HUD. You added ARPA dollars to it, and we've been making a big difference. We have 28 well replacements, 13 septic tanks, and 10 sewer connections in the last year. You often ask about the Snouten, so I wanted to give you a quick update on Snouten. As you may recall, Snouten is 4.5 million, $4 million for the infrastructure and $500,000 for the connections. The project began in November of last year, and they are anticipating completion in January of 2026. I wanted to give you an idea. This is the Snouten area, and what you have before you, if you can see the green line, those are, that's the infrastructure that they're building. They're building infrastructure in six phases. To date, they have completed phases two and four. They are working on phases one and five, and then that leaves them with, I think, three and six. At any rate, those are the segments, and I shouldn't call them phases. Those are the segments. That's where they're laying the infrastructure in the Snouten community. Now, also on this map, you see the red dots. Those were homes that we were able to connect to utilities because the infrastructure was already there. Those individuals just didn't have the funds to connect to the infrastructure. And so with your allocation of the funds, we were able to connect those individuals, I think it's seven homes, to infrastructure in the Snouten area. Lincolnville, I have today with me Mayor Dickerson with the Lincolnville Project. You allocated $600,000 to the Lincolnville Project. 600 would come from Charleston County ARPA, and then they were going to pursue additional funding with up to $800,000 and would fix approximately, open the way for 22 homeowners to have access to the sewer system. They were not able to get the $800,000 grant that they initially applied for. And so North Charleston Sewer District, they sat down and sharpened their pencils, and they looked at some other things to do. The Sewer District came up with $360,000 that they decided that they would put into this project. So instead of the 800, we do have $360,000. You're also going to help fewer residents in the community. The reason I'm here today, or at the second agenda item today, I'm asking that you authorize staff to move forward with this project. The scope of work has changed. Then we're not doing the same work that we were doing before, and we will not be helping as many individuals. But as I stated earlier, when you're talking about this program, you're not just talking about preservation and keeping a person in a home. You're talking quality of life. You're talking clean water, sewer, the sewer. So it's more than just preservation, it's also quality of life. Mr. Dickerson, Mayor Dickerson, would you like to say anything?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Dickerson, I'm sorry. Perhaps afterwards, if council has any questions, when we get to the question section. Our next project, and this is in the creation world, is the Gap Financing and Infill Development. As Christine said, we allocated $20 million to create 671 rental units and 56 homeownership units. I have to tell you, whenever I go to different areas in Charleston County, I am often told that this is amazing, the work that we did with the $20 million. Pretty soon, we're probably going to have individuals coming to Charleston County to find out how we did this. So this is something to be very impressed and very proud of. So far as Christine said, the Archer School Apartments are complete, and the North Charleston Town Homes are completed. Under construction is Esau Jenkins and 573 Meeting Street. We have seven closing that South Carolina Community Loan Fund is working on, and in my department, we're trying to complete, or we will complete, the subrecipient agreements for the five infill projects. Now, we're going to change a little bit, and we're going to go away from preservation of homes and creation of homes, and we're going to talk about reducing barriers. There are individuals that are homeless. This is talking about housing instability. This is what are we doing for individuals that are homeless? The first project we have is the Just Home Project. This is one that I found interesting and I'm proud of what we have done with this particular project. This goal for this project is to break the cycle of incarceration, as Christine said, and homelessness. We've all heard the stories where an individual was homeless, and so they do a crime so they can have shelter, a roof over their head for the night. It gets cold, and they commit a crime, and they can go back into the detention center. So this program is in partnership with the Detention Center, 180 Place, Humanities Foundations, Shonda's here, Dayotis. We have $745,000 from the MacArthur Foundation. You allocated $204,000, and the MacArthur Foundation is giving $2 million in PRI funds for rehabilitation of some units in Charleston County. What I'd like to do to you is to give you a little walk of how this program works. It starts at the Detention Center. The grant pays for an intake specialist who works with individuals in the Detention Center that may have been there three or more times in the last year. And they try to tell them and convince them that they may want to participate in this program. When an individual is released and they decide to participate in the program, with transportation, we get them from the Detention Center to 180 Place. If you look at the middle of the screen and that house, that is the house that the individual moves into. It's transitional housing. It's not like your typical homeless shelter. There are two beds in each bedroom, there are washer machines, dryer, there's a sitting area, there's a beautiful porch on the outside that they can sit on. But most importantly, once they get to 180 Place, they receive wraparound services, which is what they need to move on and to do more with their lives. So they receive mental health services, they help them look for jobs. But the most important thing, and why this is tied to housing, is that they also help them find housing. Once they're ready to leave 180 Place, they are then escorted to one of the Humanities Foundation's projects. Humanities Foundation, as you may recall, did the Archer School. As you can tell in the map down below, they have five affordable housing projects, or five affordable housing communities in Charleston County. They have agreed to give us seven apartment units for this program. So when an individual leaves 180 Place, they can move into an apartment. And if you can see, there are three of the apartment units with, or apartment developments under Humanities Foundation. They can move into one of those homes with a voucher so that they can have a job and become a productive citizen in Charleston County. In exchange for the seven units that Humanities Foundation is giving us, MacArthur Foundation will loan them $2 million so that they can do renovations on their existing affordable housing. This ties right back into preservation. And so this is a program where we're using other funds from MacArthur to increase preservation in Charleston County. Today, I will come to you in the second part of this, after we do the update, to request that you allow the department to apply and accept an award of up to $200,000 from MacArthur Foundation to continue the project. The funding will end near the summer of this year, and the $200,000 will help us take the program through to the end of the year. Gateway to Housing, this is the last project that we have that deals with breaking, reducing, getting rid of the barriers for obtaining affordable housing. This program we're doing in partnership with Neighbors Together. Charleston County has $200,000 in the program, and the City of Charleston has $250,000 in the program. The way this particular program works is we're collaborating with landowners and property managers, and we're trying to convince them to do work with individuals that are often difficult to place in homes. For example, they may have low credit scores. They may have past evictions. They may have a criminal record. And in exchange for the landlord or the property manager agreeing to allow these individuals to rent their units, we will cover any damage, we, as in the program, will cover any damages. We will cover any rent payments if the lease is broken or the resident moves away and doesn't continue paying rents. So we're trying to incentivize our landlords and property managers to assist with the problem with individuals that are often difficult to place in homes. Our final program, and the final one that I will talk about today, is our Housing and Urban Development. As I said earlier, this program has been around for over 30 years, and it crosses all of the goals in the Housing Our Future Plan that I talked about earlier. First, you have emergency repair, preservation. After that, you have your home investment. We're doing infills. We're creating houses throughout Charleston County. Also, you have your Emergency Solution Grant, which is providing assistance to those that are homeless. If you look at the pictures on the page, last year, we repaired 21 homes. We constructed two new homeownership projects. We constructed or rehabbed two for rent projects, and 168 unsheltered homeless individuals were received services through the HUD funds. Another goal from the Housing Our Future Plan is for us to, you've asked that we establish new gap funding sources to increase affordable housing production in Charleston County. So this is a different request that I'm coming to you with today. Typically, when I come before you, I have a grant, and I'm asking for permission to apply for a grant, and if we receive the grant, to accept the grant. This is different in that I am asking to complete an application for a loan. The way the program works is we have $9 million that we can borrow through HUD Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program. The reason I want to ask if this is an area that you're interested in us, in the county using funds for affordable housing, is because it's a loan, and the application process is different. We have to undergo an underwriting component, and it's a lengthier process than your typical application. So in the next part of the agenda for today, we are asking if you will authorize staff to apply for the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program for up to $9 million. to apply for the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program for up to $9 million. Right now, we have not started the work on it. We haven't sharpened our pencils and determined how we will lay out the application. But we will come back to you with the application before we submit the application. And if we are awarded the funds, we will come back to you a second time and tell you this is the pilot program, and make sure that you agree with the pilot program we are proposing. So that updates everything that's going on in my department. It's a mouthful, but that's all of the programs that we have been working on in the last year. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Smalls? Or also if we want to address anything with Mayor Dickerson for us now, or Ms. Durant? Councilman Darby?
Not necessarily for staff, sir, but I do have a question for you, Mr. Werman.
Yes, sir.
Since you have taken the lead, and we may really think that we are doing something, but that $20 million really pales in comparison onto the knees thereof. And we all here fought for affordable housing. That's what we fight for. But affordable housing and low-income housing are not synonymous. There is a distinct difference between the two. We have focused so much on affordable housing, but what have we done for low-income housing? And low-income housing can come in three ranges: low income,
Very low.
and extreme low income. What are we doing for those? They are not receiving anything. Again, we fight for teachers. We fight for police officers. We fight for firemen. We fight for those folk, even those coming out of jail where the case may be. But that other group, we're not doing anything for. So my question to you, sir, in terms of your leadership, what are you going to do, sir, in terms of the categories of the low-income housing?
Well, I appreciate that, Councilman Darby. You know, I think, I would push back a little bit on that. I think that, you know, affordable housing, low-income housing, I think it's probably best to start talking in terms of AMI. You know, that's where we can all make sure we're on the same page. And frankly, I'll tell you, with the gap financing program, I've been very impressed with our ability. You know, one of the issues you sometimes see is that these loan funds will only go sort of towards that 120 AMI, 100 AMI. I think ours is capped at 80, and I think we've had a fair amount of units at 60. And I don't know, I can't speak to 30. I don't know if staff, I do think that might be, you know, something that we can work on, getting down to about 30 AMI, which is generally the bottom, from what I've seen in these programs, of where you can fund things. You know, certainly, I don't know what the AMI terms would be on something like Just Home, but Just Home is going to be serving folks who are in very vulnerable situations. So I would push back on the idea that we haven't, you know, gone to, what I think is the most objective way to describe it, is deeper levels of AMI. Now, I can't sit here and tell you that I know exactly how those resources have been allocated, but I'm confident enough to tell you that we've done a fair amount on some of those lower-income levels. And, you know, but I don't think it's a bad point at all. Because, you know, these types of programs that we build, not every program is going to be able to target those. So I think that's a fair point to make, and, you know, maybe one that warrants some discussion when we get to setting goals, which I think we're going to do here at about 3F.
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, it's not a condemnation, sir, by no means. Because again, we all fight for affordable housing. But I just want council to know that there is a distinct difference. Because I think affordable is not more than 30% of one's income. But when you come to low income, we are talking about 80% below. And there's a vast difference, and I don't think that we have focus on that. So I'm saying let's try to put a little more focus on low income, indeed while we're helping affordable, but at the same time, just not leave that group at all entirety. Of course, there are some perhaps we've helped. But in terms of vast majority of these low-income categories, I don't think that we have been as efficient and effective as we have with affordable housing. So it's not a condemnation.
Understood. No, I think it's a very good point, and one that we always need to keep in mind, that there are a lot of different levels of income that get grouped into what some people will generally call affordable housing. So being precise about the language is a good point. We need to make sure we're hitting all levels. Thank you for that, Mr. Darby. Chairman Middleton?
Thank you so much, Mr. Werman, Councilman Darby, and all of our council colleagues. I just wanted to celebrate, right? Just the wonderful work that you all have done. And I know you're not finished, but I know you're not finished. I just wanted to celebrate this part before moving on to the next part, right? Recognizing that in three years, you know, again, many of these opportunities, had it not been for ARPA funds, had it not been for the tenacity of council to then insist upon the investment of some of those dollars in pilot programs. And it's a shame, I would say a crying shame, that we have to then, you know, use grant funds and/or special funds in order to do some of these things that we have now seen through this Housing Our Future Plan, through the very iterative, bullet pointed things that you all have achieved through this program, that what more could we do if these were line items in the general budget, right? If these were funded things as priorities that were pervasive just throughout Charleston County government, and that became a part of our values, that then even the least of them would also always be included, and the dragnet would improve the quality of living, and everybody in Charleston County could thrive, from the most affluent to those who are extremely on the vulnerable end of the spectrum. I am extremely impressed when I saw even the slide presentation in the organization using the Charleston County Council's strategic plan, recognizing that, you know, I carry this around like I carry my Bible, but along with my Bible, I carry all of these plans that we have put together over these years, recognizing that it's nothing to put on a shelf, realizing that these become guiding tools, you know, for staff and for directorates and for departments to use as you plan your work. And you all have done that extraordinarily well, and are examples in all, should be examples across county government as to when council itself sets out these lofty priorities, it becomes the job of staff to make certain that these things are carried out. So I wanted to point that out, and I wanted to go back to the goals, those five strategic goals in that Housing Our Future Plan, and recognizing the language. I know you talked about language just a minute ago, Mr. Werman, the preservation of homes, and from the preservation of homes to the creation of homes. So using language from the plan to help us understand the movement of the types of things. And even when you talked about the preservation of homes, that almost was an AMI conversation within itself, without even using the breakdown of AMI, and then talking about the creation of homes, looking at those most vulnerable. We did talk about, even in a presentation that came from the City of Charleston, those individuals who are unhoused, and those who are homeless, and those individuals who need the help the most as it relates to getting back on their feet. Everybody who finds themselves in that category or in that position in their lives, they're not necessarily bad people. They need help. They need real help. And when we saw the wraparound services that also accompanied some of the interventions that you all embedded, you know, in the things that you were hoping, you know, to inspire, it was very, very encouraging. And so I just wanted to take a minute, recognizing that there's so much more to do, right? There's more to do. And I wish, and I pray, and I hope, because many of these things, we were able to at least test out through ARPA funding. Now, you know, again, nobody wanted a pandemic. But these are good things that have come out of funds that were used well, and funds that were invested in ways that will reverberate long after all of us are dead and gone. These things are in perpetuity, hopefully, you know, as we continue to prioritize them. In perpetuity, they are here in order to help, you know, those who live in Charleston County. So I'm extremely encouraged, and I know it's more than the time that I've been allotted, but I'm extremely encouraged by the things that I've heard so far, realizing that, as Mr. Darby said, there's so much more to do. And I know you've listed those things that we need to act upon. And I know there's another part of the presentation, but those things that we need to act upon, as Mr. Durant held up that binder, it's hard to contemplate all of the things. But I wish that from time to time, we sit back in our reflective chairs and recognize that whereas we don't always agree on every single thing, look at the good work that happens when we all come together. And it's benefiting people, people out there in our county. So thank God for the work that you all are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Councilman Kibrowski, I would just ask, I think we're kind of holding up maybe Mr. Davis.
Yes, I was going to say.
Some things to talk about it. Maybe we'll just hold those questions. I maybe opened the floor a little too early, but I would turn it over to staff just now. But Mr. Kibrowski, I've got you down on the list here, and we'll come right back to you.
All right, thank you.
And I did want to say, to answer Mr. Darby's question, I really appreciate that. Of the Archer and Esaw and 275 UG and Meeting, all of those were the 30% to 60% AMI. So they are the lowest of the low. There's also one for homelessness. So that is very much an element of what these projects are. And we can get together a summary.
Please, let me say this. I mean, I'm not here to attack anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
All I'm saying is that perhaps we may just need to refocus on the lower level. That's all I'm saying. Again, we're on the same team here. We all fought for affordable housing. I'm simply saying that as we go along, let's refocus to help those in the lowest bracket. That's all I'm saying. It's not a condemnation. There's nothing like that at all. I'm just saying, let's look elsewhere to try to help support. That's all I'm saying.
I think that's a good thought and a worthy thing to add. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Smalls, members of council. I'm going to give you a very brief update on the three programs that Housing and Land Management and initiatives that we've been working hard on over the last few months. As you'll recall, council allocated 2.5 million in ARPA funds towards land acquisition for affordable housing, and authorized us to contract with Charleston Redevelopment Corporation to help develop and administer a new grant program. Through this program, four end nonprofit developers can apply for funds to be used to acquire property to then develop facilities for long-term affordable and workforce housing throughout the county. November 2024, you all approved 1.6 million in awards to four different projects as part of Round One. And April 2025, we've been working with Charleston Redevelopment Corporation to close three different projects of those four. The first one being Cross Point. They were awarded $500,000, and this one's really unique. It's actually a redevelopment and conversion from an existing market-rate multifamily unit. There's 32 units. All 32 will be reserved for the various AMIs you see there, 180 and 50% AMIs for a 20-year minimum term. The next two projects are homeownership projects. East Cooper Habitat for Humanities is on Tower Drive in Mount Pleasant. They were awarded $350,000 to buy land to construct four single-family homes for ownership, targeting that 80% AMI for a minimum 20-year term. The third one is Palmetto Community Action Partnership's Adair Street acquisitions. They are about to close on two lots. They were awarded $250,000. The first two lots, they'll use $50,000 of that to acquire land for two single-family homes for homeownership, targeting 80% and below AMI with a 30-year term minimum on affordability. The fourth one that you approved, West Ashley Multifamily Workforce, it was withdrawn due to a number of site challenges. So that $500,000 they were awarded will be returned for Round Two. What to expect next? PCAP, Palmetto Community Action Partnership, still has $200,000. We'll be working with them on approximately six more lots for homeownership projects. We will have a new application cycle opening in May. There'll be 1.4 million still available to award during that cycle. You'll recall, this was a pilot program. We learned from the first round that we need to be a little more flexible on our application process. So we're going to open it up in May, do an initial review at four weeks, and we're going to keep accepting applications after that. So if those initial applications, if we don't recommend enough to expend all the funding, then we'll go to the other applications that have rolled in since that four-week review. We are also looking at doing a launch event, and we want to highlight the work that's already underway as a result of the funding that you've awarded in Round One, and to get the word out about Round Two. So expect some more information coming to you in the next few weeks on that. Second initiative we've been working on is the Local Housing Trust Fund. In February 2024, council allocated 4.15 million in local accommodation tax dollars. And then just a few months later, as part of the FY25 budget process, you awarded another 4.2 million, allocated another 4.2 million of local accommodations tax towards the trust fund. After piloting our partnership with the loan fund through our clearly successful gap financing program, we went ahead and signed an agreement, as you're aware, in March, the Local Housing Trust Fund Agreement for the loan fund to administer that program for us. Planning and coordination meetings have been underway. We've been meeting weekly. And what to expect next is for us to finalize the application and award process. And then, as outlined in our agreement with the loan fund, we're going to start taking applications in May, and those will be for revolving loan applications. So that we, this is not a one-time impact. Those dollars will come back in, recycle through the program, and will make impacts down the road for generations. We currently have, in our current working version of the FY26 budget, staff's recommending 4.25 million in ATAX. The third program that Housing and Land Management has been working on are housing tax incentives. Just last September, you all approved the Uniform Tax Exemption Policy for Use and Abating Taxes for Affordable Housing through our multi-county park ordinance. We worked to operationalize that, and in January began accepting notices of intent to apply for abatement. And that notice of intent is kind of like a pre-application so that we can screen the projects. We're currently reviewing two projects that have actually made it to the full application process. So expect us to complete that abatement analysis of current requests and come back to you in the very near future for any recommendations that result from that. And a little further out on the horizon, after we learn from these first few applications, we're going to be working with IT to launch our new online web-based application. That's the end of the update. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Darby, I think Councilman Kibrowski
Yes, sir.
had sort of reserved a spot, so I'm going to go to him first, but then I've got you on the list. Yes, sir. Councilman Kibrowski?
Staff for the amazing job you did in setting forth for us, and thank Chairman Werman for the role he did in this committee. And I echo also Mr. Darby's comments. And we all collectively, you know, respond to different things. But I also want to put in there that I feel affordable housing is the ability to afford to stay in your house. And I hope we remember this when many people, families, have lived here for generations and generations. People of modest means, they love where they're living, and through no fault of their own, and in part because of the development, things that we do, and encourage gentrification or development, that the price of where they live, the surrounding homes have gone up so much, they have trouble staying where they are. And I think that when it comes time that, when we levy property taxes at the end and our budget, we keep in mind that affordable housing is also the ability of people to remain there and not get priced out of where they live through. Their income may not have changed, but as a result of people moving here and the policies we do, that homes go up in value beyond which they can stay in. And I hope we keep that in mind. And I hope and pray we can actually decrease taxes, because I feel, again, as I make the rounds, you run into lots of people who feel well-weathered, they can afford to stay living where they live, and they love where they live, and part of the heart and soul of who we are. And I hope we don't lose sight of that in the mix of what affordable housing means. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kibrowski. Anyone else hearing none? I'll offer, Mr. Darby, sorry.
No problem, sir.
I have you written down here.
If I could get an explanation of the rental part that we, of the dollars toward rental units, and to whom do those dollars go to? I think there were 670 somewhat rental units of sorts.
Yes, sir.
Where do those dollars go, ma'am? To whom does it go?
Succinctly, the way I would say that is, in order to keep units affordable for rent, the programs are designed to buy down the cost of either the construction or the rehab or whatever it is. So if, let's say, in Archer, Archer's a great example, you all put money into Archer, what that allowed Humanities to do was actually lower the cost of the rent because they didn't have to pay as much to build it. Now, the key to that is, we have to monitor that to make sure that the people that get put in those rental units actually are qualified to be in those units. They're at the lower income. And that the... the developer or owner is still renting them at the affordable rates. So there is an ongoing monitoring compliance, but basically, we're offsetting the cost to build, rehab, develop, whatever that is, with some of the funds that you all have allocated so that they can be rented at affordable rates across the AMI spectrum. Is that?
Well, I guess my fear or trepidation would be that the owners of the rental units are not getting additional rent dollars for folk to stay there. They don't want to be used.
You are correct, and that is where the monitoring is critical. We have to monitor, and we do that now with any of the projects that we work on with HUD.
So there's some type of contractual agreement there of sorts?
There are, and in fact, there are clawback provisions in our contracts. And if for any reason, monitoring shows that someone was not complying, then they would be due, if, like in the tax abatement strategy, they would have to pay back anything that was abated. But that, the monitoring piece is the next phase of all of these initiatives is what staff is going to have to focus on, is ensuring that they do what they said they were going to do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moody.
No, committee.
I just wanted to, seeing that slide, I saw council, former Councilwoman Johnson, who was a big advocate of housing, and I think all the way back, maybe back to when Chairman Pryor was governing, you know, she was making a lot of noise about this stuff, and sort of kind of got the ball rolling, I think. Judge Rall used to chirp about it a good bit, too. But it's been a long time coming, resulting in a lot of, a lot of good work the last couple of years. So I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Johnson I saw in that picture there.
Thank you, Mr. Werman. Councilman Pryor.
And to add to what Councilman Moody said, this whole body got attacked by several groups saying that we weren't doing anything, and they were coming there shouting and screaming, but you don't see any of them coming back saying, "Thank you, the good work that you've done." I mean, no, I'm just, I mean, the same way you came and you chastised us, they should be coming back here up there and saying, "Thank you for the work." But there's been familiar faces that came in, said some, you know, derogatory things toward this council as well as Ms. Johnson, and now that the program is up and running, I don't see any of them coming up there saying, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." So this council has done a great job, and we were serious about it, but like anything else, it takes time to get things in place and to get things working. But sometimes people have the microwave spirit. They want it done in 10, 20 seconds, you know, versus two years. So thank you again, council and staff, for, you know, your wisdom moving forward. But we took a beating, but we kept on ticking.
Mr. Chairman, you may just be reminded, at least there was one who looked back and returned. I think our chairman is one who, who would give the council some praise for what we have done for housing since he was born.
Mr. Chairman.
Can you giving some praise again right now, in the sense that the land acquisition grant program was a huge, is a huge success. The Local Housing Trust Fund did cross the finish line and is a realization today. I heard the successful gap financing program that continues, again, through that South Carolina Community Loan Fund partnership. And so I did also hear the word pilot, you know, multiple times, pilot, 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 pilot. And through ARPA funds, we were able to realize some of these things. And again, as council, these things don't sustain themselves, right? We have to have, you know, the drive beyond Ms. Johnson, beyond Judge Rall, beyond, you know, the attaboy, you know, for the things that happened, you know, in what we've heard in the presentations from 2021 through 2024. But how do we sustain this in the years to come? There's no more ARPA, right? That's gone away. And so we have to now, based on the pilots that we've seen, the success that has been realized, we have to now make very strategic decisions to make certain that these things continue moving forward. Thank you so much.
Councilman Sasse, now we have a number of other items to get to.
Yes.
I do, so just so you know, there will be opportunity.
Yeah, we came for a meeting, though.
Okay, well, I just didn't want anyone to think we were in closing remarks.
I don't want to leave here without saying everything I want to say. When other folks, you know, are very verbose and loquacious, they go on and on and on about the things that matter to them most, and therefore, I am not going to feel any kind of way celebrating these things or making as many points so that we might recognize the importance.
Issue with that. Let's keep the celebration rolling.
Mr. Pryor just said that people have a microwave spirit. So we don't want to be in and out of this meeting before we do the meaningful work of the people of Charleston County.
All right, well, let's keep this party going. Councilman Sasse.
Thank you, Mr. Werman. I just, I just want to thank Ms. Durant, Ms. Smalls, Mr. Davis, and everybody else that's worked on this. Y'all, y'all worked on this. There are a lot of starts and stops. There are a lot of ups and downs. You thought something was going to work. You had to go try it another way. Y'all have done a tremendous amount of work, and I'll be honest with you, it was very comforting for me to know that y'all were doing this and the way you were going about it, because I think you went about it the right way, and we got a good, sustainable program here. So I just want to thank y'all and everybody else that helped in the county. But thank y'all very much.
Very good. All right. Before we move to the next item on the agenda, I'm just going to join, join in on this, just because it seems like we've, we've kind of all set our piece, and I would just, you know, echo what a lot of, a lot of what has been said here tonight. Thank you certainly to Ms. Durant, to everyone on staff who's put so much work into this. Thank you to our partners in the community. You know, so much of this is, is done through work with nonprofits and other advocates who've really helped keep the momentum. And thank you to, you know, everyone on this council and folks on prior councils before us. I think that, you know, it takes all of us sort of rowing in the same direction to get, to get where we're at now and where we want to continue going. So with that being said, I'll move on to items, item 3A.
Mr. Chair, I suggest we take these one at a time.
Well, very good. Then we'll stick with 3A.
I would move to approve. I know that this is a loan exploration, which we've not done before. They want to put together the application. They will bring it back before they submit. Then if they are awarded, they will bring it back again. So I move that we approve the HUD Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I know I have a question, but I just want to hear from other folks on the committee or on council beforehand. Councilman Moody.
I'd be interested to know. I don't mind Reverend Middleton exploring this. I would be very interested to know what the, what the repayment scenario is and what the source of repayment is of this loan fund, what it's going to cost us, Ms. Durant.
Yes, sir.
You're nodding. You don't have to answer me now, but whenever.
Sure. And we have done this one other time, back in 2008, and then the recession hit, and so we were not successful. But the bottom line is, when we get to a point of bringing this to council, we would have to advise you that we have to put our CDBG HUD, HUD funds up as collateral. And so the whole structure, the way HUD DC structures these, is we are risking, should a loan default, we are risking future CDBG HUD funds. That's part of the due diligence that we will do as staff as we go through and explore what a project would look like, because that could have another impact on the other side of our community services if we were to go into this program and then have it default. So much like our gap financing, we will do a lot of due diligence, and we would not enter into that recommendation to you all lightly. But that is where, that is the collateral that is associated with this.
Also in the cost, the repayment terms and things like that, that's going to tell me what it is. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Pryor.
I just got a quick question. Ms. Durant, so the county would borrow the money, we would be responsible for the repayment, correct?
Ultimately, in a Section 108 structure, we would be on the hook, much like we are with any of our other funds, which is why the due diligence, the pro forma, the evaluation would all go into whatever recommendation, should we get to that point. And to Ms. Smalls' point, right now, we are just wanting to put our hat in the ring, because council has directed us to look for alternative ways to fund affordable housing initiatives under our plan, and this is an alternative way that we have explored in the past and worked at length with DC at the time. We would have to decide if the recommendation comes back to you all in the affirmative once we do that.
But this, but we will be the guarantor of this.
Your HUD funds are the collateral.
You're right, HUD funds. And my second question would be, to finance, would this affect our credit rating at all if we redo this and have a $9 million loan hanging over our head?
I don't know if Mac wants to answer that.
The county has a much higher amount of debt, so that $9 million probably would not move the needle that much. But the appearance of any default actually could have some impact, but it depends on how the rating agencies view it.
All right, so the answer would be, your answer is no?
Based on what I know, I would say it doesn't appear that it would be significant enough to change the bond rating.
So that's a no. I don't want to, I don't.
Councilman Pryor, I think that's a, he will find, he will have a more definitive answer probably at a future time.
Yeah, because I don't want to, I tell people, put it in layman's terms, I don't want you to be a lawyer. I want you to tell, give me a straight answer, yes or no. And you don't have to do it tonight, but I think I need to know by the final vote on Tuesday, because that's going to weigh my decision. It's been fought hard to get that AAA bond credit rating. That's one of the things that I take pride in, because when I first came to chair, you know, we spent three days and, no, three nights and two days up there to get that. And I don't want to lose that based on trying to be good to someone else and cost us, because you know, we, I think we said about $11 million, you know, the first year where we refinanced, when we got that AAA bond rating. So I want to know a definite yes or no on Tuesday. You don't have to answer it tonight, but no ambivalence for me. Thank you.
Councilman Kibrowski.
A quick question, and forgive me for being confused, that, again, in layman's terms, and I thought Mr. Moody had a good question and Mr. Pryor, what would be on the, he said it would be on the hook. So what would be on the hook? What would we be on the hook for? And what is the source of the $9 million that, I have a little confusion understanding, what would be on the hook for? And you mentioned $9 million, and where would that come from? And what does that have to do with the loan, and how is that related? So thank you.
Yes, sir. Every year, as an entitlement community, Charleston County receives about $3 or $4 million in HUD funds across different funding sources. The way the Section 108 is structured, it is designed to allow local governments to leverage or put up for collateral, the HUD funds, future HUD funds, that we would receive in exchange for structuring a loan to a developer or depending on, you know, who the recipient would be, to allow us to basically revolve, in some ways, our HUD funds forward. So as an entitlement, we get a set amount every year, and the $9 million that Ms. Smalls talked about is based on a calculation of what our HUD funds that we are entitled to get every year is built around, in essence, I mean, without getting into all the nuts and bolts. So the decision, should we, first of all, this, again, is just a submission, a request to allow us to just get in the running. That's it. It's not even to ask for the loan, because that's a whole different financial process. If we did come up with a project and a developer, much like we did with gap financing, that would be eligible, and it would fulfill some of the priorities that you all have established in the Housing Our Future Plan, we would come back to council, and at that point, council would have to weigh the risk benefit to putting up our HUD funds as the collateral to advance a project that could put.
You can't risk future money, not fund bonds or anything.
HUD money. You're putting, and your HUD money, of course, does more than just housing.
Right. All right, thank you.
In a nutshell.
Councilman Pryor.
We'd be lucky if we get anything. The government is cutting up in Washington DC now. Don't look for any more money from HUD and all these other things. So this may be good aspiration, but until we receive it, because, I mean, this, this doge or whatever, they're cutting everything. So that's, you know, good intentions, but let's make sure the money's going to be there.
Well, and Ms. Durant, it sounds like this would be coming back to council before we sort of cross the Rubicon on this thing, right?
A couple of times.
A couple of times. So there will be plenty of opportunities to get questions answered, you know, and so I do appreciate y'all, you know, listen, we've talked about this, that we got to claw and scrap and find every penny we can find and look in every corner we can, we can think to look in. So I appreciate y'all doing that, and I think that's consistent and, and, you know, well worth exploring, in my opinion, but.
Thank you, Mr. Werman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else on this item? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None opposed? The item passes. We're moving on to 3B, Critical Home Repair Reallocation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, that one passes as well. Turning to 3C.
Approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion on 3C? All right, here.
Everybody would be eligible from across the county, even though we're focusing on this, you know, the areas that are most Adams Run, Hollywood, et cetera. But then if there were flood-damaged homes in McClellanville, or Allendale, or Lincolnville, you know, somehow that came to light, you would still entertain those applications.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much.
Very good. Councilman Kibrowski.
Since you mentioned that, I mean, would they be equally considered? I mean, when you said they would be considered, but I just want to make it clear, it's not being considered after these other areas are.
Ms. Smalls, do you want to take a shot at this?
Because that would be a great concern to me of representing a, my district is completely on the coast.
Yes, sir. The way we do our applications for any of the programs an individual will apply, we have a timeframe. So let's say we run this application from May 1st through May 31st. Whatever applications come in, we do a blind draw, and those names are drawn from the applications we receive. So there isn't a rake, we don't rank the projects or rank the applications that come in. So yes, everybody has an equal chance.
Well, that's my point, because none of us can know where the hurricane would hit and what would, who would be hit the hardest. That was, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good. All right. Councilman Boykin.
Thought I saw you.
Ms. Smalls. I think what I'm trying to get to is, this is for damage already done.
Yes, sir.
Not, not what's to come.
Yes, damages that have occurred.
Thank you. All right. I think we can call for a vote on that one. All in favor on 3C?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Item passes. 3D, this is the Lincolnville sewer extension, I understand.
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded.
Also wanted to, oh.
And I, I can wait till finance if you want me to, but I just thought I'd ask some questions here. Trying to understand how we got here. If I follow what Ms. Smalls was saying, we had approved $100,000 contingent on Lincolnville finding 800.
600.
600, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So they got a grant, but then it got pulled from the city, from, from North Charleston Sewer District?
No, sir. The SIP pulled the grant from North Charleston Sewer District.
Yeah, it went away.
Yes, it went away.
Okay. So we're still on the hook for our 100, and they're still, Lincolnville's still on the hook for 600.
No, sir. We're still on the hook. We allocated 600,000. Lincolnville didn't have any funds in the program.
Memo said we allocated 100,000, and they were to get 800,000.
Nope. It's 600,000. There's, well, there are two programs. There's the connection, and that's 100,000, and then the infrastructure was 500,000. So it's a total of 600,000.
Okay, so I guess, are we being asked to?
Yeah, we need to discuss.
I think, I think what you're getting at is, we're being asked to take on a larger portion of this, and the size and scope of the project is going to have to come down. I mean, that's the effect of losing the SIP money.
So they made application with any other organizations, do we know of?
I missed, I didn't hear the.
Has the town made application with any other organizations or any other grant providers?
Not that I'm aware of.
Does the town of Lincolnville have any money in the game?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
All right, I actually have a question. Ms. Smalls, you know, these are ARPA funds, right?
Yes, they are.
Do we have some sort of, I mean, I'm just going to put it out there, are we kind of backed in the corner on this? I mean, can, what happens if we pull these? Do we have to send them back to Washington, or?
No, sir. At this point, we have time. We can reallocate it if that were an option.
All right, well, fair enough. I'm not inclined to do that, but anyone else on council? Councilman Pryor.
So they scaled back the project by $240,000, okay? It's ARPA funds, it's money that was granted. I don't have a parliament helping them. This sits right in my district, okay? And, and I would like to see if we could find the other $240,000, some way to do the whole project.
Me, too.
Because these folks up there, you know, Because these folks up there, you know, they're being overran, they're being, you know, flooded with new development, but, and I think as they grow, they will be able to sustain some things, but I, what is the population, under five thousand people? What are your population, Mr.?
Mayor Dixon.
Mayor Dixon, what is your?
We have a population of about twenty-five hundred.
All right, that's, that's good, don't see, you answered my question.
Okay.
All right, you answered my question, so I know we used to have a policy on council that was under five thousand, you know, the county would do certain things to help these smaller municipalities. But, I mean, this is something that needs to be done, and more or less like snout, let's not wait until the price goes up and it's unbearable. And so while we got the ARPA funds, I think we ought to use it, but, you know, if we can't find the other two hundred and forty thousand, we did what we can, and it's gonna help, you know, the majority of the people, not all. But I'd like to see this council, you know, maybe step up and, and help me, along with the town of Lincolnville, make this a successful project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's get a vote on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. The Just Home Continuation Grant Request?
Approve.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Then finally, we have 3F, that's our Housing Our Future Plan priorities. Ms. Durant, were y'all gonna frame this up, or would you like me to kind of talk about it, or how do we? Mr. Davis is on deck, ready to go.
Just very briefly, Mr. Chairman, you'll recall, about two years ago, I believe it was May of 2023, you had our Housing Workshop, and you all instructed staff that there were two top priorities out of these various recommended strategies in our Housing Our Future Plan. Those were establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support priority activities, that's underway, as well as utilizing bank land to support affordable and mixed income housing development. Happy to answer any questions beyond that? Yes, sir.
Well, I've got a couple, or, we'll start with Mr. Chairman, Chairman Middleton.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I, I thought, just based on the presentation, all of those were hugely, you know, successful, and staff, you know, dug into those, and, and certainly exceeded our expectations. And looking at strategic goal number two, our reducing barriers to adding needed housing, to the needing housing supply, you know, 2A, 2B, you know, our contiguous, continue to re-refine the zoning and land regulations development ordinance to maximize housing development opportunities. 2B particularly, collaborating with municipal partners to align zoning and other land regulation, use regulations, that's gonna be extremely important. Looking at strategic goal number three, investing in creation and preservation of attainable housing. 3D particularly, continue to explore and support housing authority coordination. We've talked about a regional kind of approach, and even if regional only means Charleston County, City of Charleston, North Charleston, that's regional enough, right? And so, you know, we had teed that up some years ago, and, and abandoned it, and so it may be time to make that a priority, but I just wanted to lift those things up from the, from the strategic goals as talking points for us to consider.
I forgot a question, you know, when we did this exercise two years ago, you know, we're here now, it's time to reset them, and I sort of, you know, I don't think it took too long or anything like that, I'm not trying to have a microwave mentality, but, but I do, it does sort of strike me that, that all of these would not necessarily need a two-year lead time now, so I guess I'm kind of wondering, you know, so I'm, I'm, you know, kind of looking at the ZLDR one as well, and just want, you know, we rewrite the ZLDR every couple of years, is that something that we would expect is gonna be a sort of two-year-long project, a one-year-long project? And I guess really, more generally, not just that one specifically, but, but are all of these sort of, is that a variable that's gonna be impacted by what we ultimately choose?
I'll let Mr. Evans answer anything related to ZLDR first, and then-
The big one that we did, I don't know if all the councilmen's were on here, but we had a, a few years ago, in our zoning and land development regulations ordinance, we incentivized developers, if they chose to do affordable housing, very generously, if you, if council member recalls, if you did 25% affordable or workforce housing, you could double your density. If you did half, you could, three, more than double your density. If you did a hundred percent, you, you get, I'll, I'll just go over it here real quick. R4 is our most prolific residential zoning district. Twenty-five percent affordable workforce housing, R4 is, as a base density, is four dwelling units per acre. Twenty-five percent would get you eight units per acre. Fifty percent would get you twelve units per acre. A hundred percent would get you eighteen units per acre. That's a very generous density increase. What we're seeing is that the market is holding it back, it's the money. The developers are, are not gonna do this, even with a high density incentive, unless they're getting something else. I will say that one thing that we've noticed that is a little bit of hindrance to affordable workforce housing, is this, what they call the missing middle housing type. This, this is the duplex and the triplex issue. If council recalls, Planning Commission recommended, two previous occasions to council to allow that to be done administratively. Council kept it as a special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's been a hurdle that, whether it's affordable workforce housing or not, it's been a hurdle for people that are wanting to do alternative housing types to go through that process. I will say that the Planning Commission is looking at that again, and I, I think that they will be recommending again to allow these alternative housing types, this missing middle, in our residential zoning districts. With a little bit of a twist, we have some, some planning commissioners looking at the form of the house, so that it does not, in, in an existing neighborhood, this duplex or triplex would not look like anything other than what's already in the neighborhood. It looks like a single-family residence, and, but it will house more than one family. And there's, there are things architecturally that can be done that does not hurt the character of that neighborhood, that I think council will be seeing soon, with some other zoning amendments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Kibrowski.
I just wanna say, for my sake, that I look at strategic goal 2A, I cannot support that. I believe that, I speak for many, that we feel we're overdeveloped now, and every day we see more and more of what we love taken away, and to say to continue to refine the zoning and land regulations, development ordinance to maximize housing development opportunities, and 2C, accelerate permitting process for housing development, we see, you know, what has happened on Savannah Highway, I mean, some of it's not in our control, but in my district, I wanna preserve the rural nature of, and from Northern Mount Pleasant to McClellanville, this would be a recipe for disaster, and exactly what people don't want. So I could not support this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kibrowski. All right, well, I, I, and thank you, Mr. Davis, Ms. Durant, for all those presentations. I, I don't entirely know, I know we've got the QR code on the sheet, is that how we're doing this again?
It's my understanding that you can scan the QR code, and then vote for your three top priorities, and then those will automatically be calculated.
Beautiful, well, there may be some need for technical assistance, or a technical break. I mean, I, I will say this.
Do it at home?
I don't know that we-
Do it now?
Yeah, okay. Idea was we would do it.
This is only for committee members, I can't tell you how to do it.
This would only be for committee members, but I, I mean, it's on the finance agenda, so you better figure it out quick.
When we did the council retreat, all of council participated.
Well, I think this is on the, no, cuz we're originating it.
It, it may be a good idea just to wait and do this vote on the priorities until we get to finance, and that way it clears up any ambiguity about who's able to-
As long as Ms. Hamm is fine with that procedure, I'd prefer that, to be perfectly honest, just because we did, I distinctly remember everyone participated last time, and I would hate to, you know, sort of trip up, and not have that happen this time.
I think at that last housing retreat that we did, Ms. Honeycutt, and I think she was the chair at the time, I think she introduced a measure at the very beginning where she said, everybody will be able to participate, everybody will be able to vote, and you all may have taken some kind of action to suspend the rules of council in that order, to allow everyone to vote at that time.
Mr. Wurman?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
I would suggest that since this is listed on the item with the recommendation that you move forward some motion to take this up at finance.
I move that we do just that.
I, I'd go with that, sir, except for strategic goal number two.
Okay, well, so to be clear-
You vote on your own.
Everyone, so to be clear, everyone's gonna get an opportunity, so if you have an objection to strategic goal number two-
Don't vote for it.
-you aren't gonna vote for it. Now, that does raise another question. I seem to recall, last time, we were able to vote for three goals, we wound up with a tie at three, and that's why we only came out with two. Are we able to vote for three goals this time?
Yeah, everybody's allowed to choose three of the choices. I think what happened last time was maybe the third one tied, and so they just decided to start with two.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, once the outcome is determined, then I think we just talk as gentle people. And, and if it seems as though, you know, a goal has, you know, rolls to the top, and it seems not to have the support of council, you know, then we have additional conversations about that. But everybody chooses their own priority, until we see what rises to the majority.
All right, Mr. Pryor.
Two things, two things, so this is just a, a goal. This would have to come back to council, when the goals are established for a vote anyway, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so this is, what, what, what we would be doing is, is just be an aspirational goal.
Yeah.
And then if council wants to turn that aspiration into policy, then they would have to, to come back to full council for a vote.
Maybe I can provide an example here. So, so in May of 2023, we set these goals, Ms. Honeycutt was our chairman. Circa a year later, we were able to, Ms. Honeycutt brought to us a proposal to basically create the loan fund. We had to vote on that. More recently, we've had to vote to, to finalize the agreement with the loan fund, and thus, you know, a month ago, we had, had a, an event where we were able to, to sign that agreement. So, so the actual policies that would, would come about are all gonna require council votes.
Correct.
So if, if Mr. Evans, you know, came up with some, some sort of changes to the ZLDR, you'd be voting on those. What, what we're doing today is basically giving staff a direction of, what do we want y'all to be focusing on in, in your time, and what, what kinds of things do we want y'all to be bringing to us? So that is hopefully clarifying.
And my last point is, why the QR code? What, what happens to the old-fashioned, you just put it on a piece of paper and you vote for it, and you're determined? I mean, is this, is this gonna be the new norm now? Cuz I'll be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not all that tech, you know, technological savvy, you know, if my grandkids were there, I'd probably be able to do it, but, I mean, is this, is this gonna be the new norm? I, I mean, I'd rather just do it the, the old-fashioned way.
Like, that's a rhetorical question, but I will ask Ms. Hamm.
Yeah, because-
Could we do this? Could we do this the same way we do commissions and board recommendations, and just have folks nominate, you know, I say, I nominate 2A, I nominate-
And take a vote.
3C, I nominate that sort of thing, and then just do that? I mean, that might be a little easier.
Mr. Chair, we, we all used the QR code the last time with no problems.
Not me.
You were right there.
No, Mr. Pryor. I didn't use no code.
You used the QR code, sir.
All right.
Have anything pop up on the TV, I don't know.
We all were right there.
Motion on the floor is to move this to finance. I might just leave this as your mess to clean up, Mr. Chairman. There's no motion to get on, to, to ditch the QR code right now, so if the motion on the floor has been seconded, which I don't recall, to move this to finance.
I made the motion, and I think Mr. Darby seconded. Oh, no, he didn't, I'm sorry.
I wrote you as a second.
I thought you said you seconded, but you were against-
But that's what I thought as well.
Yeah, against goal number two, that's all, that's all.
Right, but you did second it.
I did.
Yes.
Then seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none, the motion passes. I'll see you all in Finance Committee.
Mr. Chair, we are now moving to Planning and Public Works, where Mr. Pryor is the chair, Mr. Pryor.
Chairman, no QR codes on this one. It's a simple yes or no. Good afternoon, and then welcome to our Planning and Public Works Committee Agenda, where we have three items, all members of council participate, I'm the chair, so approval of the minutes 1A. Any deletion or additions? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Item number two is a resolution opposing the annexation of Hamlin, 2790 Hamlin Beach Road by the town of Mount Pleasant. I had actually just be put on the agenda to send to the town of Mount Pleasant, and I'm, I'm glad I did, because I've had a couple of calls from council members today coming in, but I didn't respond because I was driving, that, you know, and I listened to the voice message, and they're saying that they are going to introduce some, you know, ordinances at their next meeting to actually join the county in stopping this, you know, annexation of these historic districts, but I still want this to go to them, so we'll have, you know, something in, in writing and then a vote. So is there a motion to adopt?
Move to approve.
Discussion?
Second. Say goodbye, Mr. Boykin, move by our chair, discussion, Mr. Sassen, and I come in to Mr. Kibrowski.
Thanks, sir. I talked to a, a member of the Planning Commission from Mount Pleasant yesterday, and a member of town council, and a couple of other people, and they are, and if you look at what was proposed, their zoning matches our S3.
Exactly.
And, and they are cognizant that they don't, they don't wanna be in opposition with us, and so they're, they're gonna be make, they're gonna make, be making moves with their Planning Commission and with their council, to try to get us to work together on this, so that we're all, we all have the same thing, and they can't, they can't go to mommy and not get it, and then have daddy give it to them. So, and that's exactly the way it works, and so we will, hopefully, we'll all be able to align and work together on that. So I was really, really happy to talk to them, and that they reached out, some of them reached out to me, and so I was really glad that we're all gonna work together on this. Thank you.
Mr. Kibrowski.
I wanna thank Councilman Pryor for doing this and bringing it up, I've read it, and I don't disagree with anything you said, I thought it was timely, important, and it affects my district, and it has everything to do with, as I've said many times, if anybody goes up Highway 17, as soon as you end with the, the mass subdivisions that exist, that 10 mile and the historic African-American settlement communities are the next thing, and if we just allow the properties to be annexed into the town, that I use as a caution, what happened with John's Island, the City of Charleston, and how everything changed when the City of Charleston annex thing, and life, as they knew it there changed, and I have grave concerns, because if a developer can annex in, then, well, there's nothing to stop the, them from buying property to the east and west and north, and they'll leapfrog all the way to McClellanville and change the nature of life for everybody there. I've also gotten calls, and my understanding, Councilman Pryor, is that with the annexation of the property in question is now on hold because it's in dispute, and so it went through a first reading, it has to go to a second reading now, and it's held up because of dispute, because some of its heirs' property, so that is on hold, and I do think that it's on the agenda, as I understand it, for the first Planning Committee meeting in May, and I plan to be there, and I plan to go to address town council, because I think it, you know, we have a moratorium there to stop development, and in my opinion, this is clearly attempt by the owners of that to get around that. I think that the, the town of Mount Pleasant, who I heard from, from the councilmen, there are those who agree with us. Of course, nothing is final until it's voted on, but I think this had a very productive response. My question is, I mean, I just opened it for discussion, we, we, the annexation is opened it for discussion, we, we, the annexation is on hold. They have it on the Planning Commission for the, uh, first meeting in May, which is like a week away approximately. Um, are we better off putting this on hold after that to see what they do? I just opened it for discussion. I'm totally with you. I want to stop developers from annexing to avoid our moratoriums, because this is, uh, I just opened it for the collective wisdom how to proceed to have the strongest effect.
Mr. Moody.
I think, Mr. Cross, you may answer my question. I was wondering if the, if the town was annexing them as they're allowed to do under state law, or if the applicant, the owner of the property was requesting annexation for more favorable.
My understanding was that the property owners initiated it. That's my understanding, but I don't represent.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. That's my honest understanding. Answer your question, Mr. Moody.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Chairman?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, remind, you know, as I listen to the folk, uh, that come from Snowden, you know, of course, you know, I, my family originated from Kane Hoi, and then also paternally from McClellanville, and then certainly all over Charleston County, apparently, uh, but, um, but certainly those areas. And when I listen to the people who came, uh, in over the years, five years I've been here from Snowden, and then they'd been coming for 30, 40, 50 years, uh, pertaining to, uh, certain things because the town then, um, wanted to force annexation. And so to the extent that, uh, they almost had to go into litigation, and then we supposedly were going to, who's going to sue? You know, because again, the town, town even defied us when we sent, you know, some kind of strong, um, admonition to them, you know, to do right by Snowden, that community. And certainly we've seen what ha, what's happened to 4 Mile, 6 Mile, 10 Mile, all the miles up there. And so I just don't trust that even if contemplated on an upcoming agenda, that we should wait to pass our resolution to send a word to them to see if they, you know, by, by the time we get to their commission meeting in May, they could have had a 360-degree turn. Who knows? I think the, the sentiment is still strong as it relates to the opposition, and it goes on record. This council has done that on many occasions before, particularly when sending resolutions up to the State House, uh, relative to, you know, elected people in Charleston County that we wanted to at least send a, a note, you know, about and/or other things that we have done. And so it did not, uh, change the fact that the election was coming up. It didn't change the fact that all these other measures were also in the works. Uh, we still did it, uh, in order to make a point. And so if we have an opposition, uh, prayerfully, the majority, or if there is a majority of individuals who deem this, uh, to be worthy so, we should not even care what they're going to do, because it is on record from us, based on the protections that we've put in place, regardless of individuals who decide on their own, um, when they buy property in those areas, if they want to, you know, appeal to the town. This is a strong message. If we're going to have an HPC and those type ordinances, uh, it needs to be respected throughout, uh, those areas, even if they have unincorporated Charleston County residents living there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Werman?
Yeah, well, I, I, I think this is basically what the chairman just said, but, but I would think now is the more appropriate time. They don't want to do it after they've already made the decision. So, you know, to the extent we want our voice, voices to be heard, I'd, I think now is, is the time, as good a time as any, and, and probably better.
All right. Hang on that. I mean, we're going to go ahead and take the vote. Discussion has ended. And so all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The unanimous passes. Okay, we now, we move on to item number three, drainage easement for Ashley Hall Road at Sam.
Second.
Pardon, if there's, who, who moved? Mr. Moody, seconded by the chairman. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Eyes have it. That concludes our Planning and Public Works Committee meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. Prior. Was not quite as microwave as, as you thought it would have been, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm good, but I got to leave at about 7:25.
We'll be out of here soon.
Okay.
Yes, because all the other work has been done in the other committees. We're now ready to go into our Finance Committee meeting. Uh, item one.
Move for approval.
I got promptly moved and seconded. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
Oppusers, nay.
Approval on items 2A and B.
Uh, items 2A and B, promptly moved and seconded. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it. Let's take these, uh, item three, one at a time.
B through F.
All right.
Move for approval.
Uh, let us hear from Councilman Moody.
Um, I was just going to ask if we might take these individually. There's several of these that, you know, three of them have got conservation bank pending items.
That's right.
Some of them have got, uh, fundraising goals.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's right. That's right.
I'm sorry. You're right.
Yeah.
So I take one, and, um, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just in a hurry. So, so 3A, Mr. Chairman, can we move that until Tuesday? It does, it's just a presentation.
Oh.
3A. It's just a CO tax update and green belt. Can we move that to Tuesday?
So, yes, sir. We can do that.
Thank you.
All right. 3B, uh, Botany Bay Expansion, green belt.
It's down by Ettles though.
Yeah.
It's on Ettles though. It's on Ettles though.
Is this, this is not an easement, is it?
No, sir. And, well, Mr. Chairman, I think we should receive the presentation. I hate to do that.
The presentation is this. I mean, it's about all these projects.
I think we, I think we need to receive the present. I know people have to go.
Yeah, because I got a Zoom call at 7:30. I got to be on.
All right. How long is the presentation?
Well, there are two presentations. There's the regular quarterly update that we provide, and then we have a presentation set aside if you want it, that has slides for each of the five projects.
Skip the quarterly update for now, and just do each one.
Can, well, let's do this. Let's, let's do this.
Can you, can you advance at least to the slide that shows, go back to the slide that shows who has the money in the bank, and where they're overdrawn, or if they have enough money?
Okay, so that's our, uh, urban funds currently available, and you'll see the balances over to the right. Um, out of those, Urban Unincorporated is severely forward-spent. Folly Beach, um, is significantly forward-spent. But then the other two, uh, Lincoln, Lincolnville and Mount Pleasant, those are actually a result of an action that council took last cycle to award the Red Top Project. You'll recall that, uh, that was drawn from each allocation equal, or on a prorata basis.
That's right.
So those, those entities also had applications in for their full allocated amount. So with that award, it forced those slightly into the negative.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Prior?
Um, if we have to go through the presentation, can we have, and this is just my thought, because I, I want to be a part of it. Can we have a special Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday to take up 3, uh, B through F?
Yes, sir. We'll have a special Finance Committee on Tuesday.
On Tuesday for 3A, B through F.
So we can have the full presentation.
Normally, you know, I'll be here, but I've, I've got an important Zoom meeting at 7:30.
That's all right. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, item four?
Move for approvals on A through H.
Uh, hold on a second.
Second. All right. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sasse?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry about that. Um, I had a question, and I don't know if anybody's here from Economic Development. Um, I had a question about 4B.
Mr. Johnson.
Um, uh, I didn't see him. Oh, he is here. Okay, I'm sorry. Merle, I'm glad to see you. Thank you, sir. Um, thank you, thank you, thank you, sir, Mr. Director Johnson. I had a question about 4B. It was about the, uh, traffic signal in front of the MRF. And, uh, just explain to me, I guess I just have a question. I know this, we've already discussed this years, years earlier, but we have that much traffic going into the MRF that we got to have a traffic signal?
Yes, sir.
I mean, every time I'm up there, there's no traffic up there on that road.
There is, and then there's a, go ahead, Mr. Think Ben. Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry.
If I could, Mr. Sasse, um, this intersection on one side is the MRF, the other side is Luke Collins Road, and they just built a several hundred, 1.3 million square feet warehouse.
Right.
It's all tractor trailers, and it will assist those tractor trailers of getting out into the flow.
So that light's going to be down on that end, on the far end of our MRF property?
It's, it's right at the front driveway.
On the south.
And if you drive up there, you can't miss the warehouse. It's huge.
Okay. I figured maybe that had something to do with it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
One more thing for Mr. Think Ben. Who's responsible for keeping that roadway clean? Is it the city of North Charleston? That's because I'm getting calls saying, you know, trash is being all in the road from coming, you know, with these trucks and COVID. So who's responsible for that?
It is the city of North Charleston roadway.
Okay. Thank you for telling me that, because, you know, they keep calling saying, no, it's the county, but so it's the city of North Charleston. All right. I'll deal with that tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it. Uh, item five?
Move for approval, uh, A through A and B.
Second. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. All right.
Was that Werman, Werman, nay? Okay.
Item six?
Move for approval.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. All right. Item seven?
Move for 7A through E. Because I mean, you got to do something with 7F, right?
Yes, sir.
I was going to see if we could do 7D separately. I, I'm not in support of that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, let's just take them, A, B, and C.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Eyes have it. 7D.
Move for approval.
Probably moved. Second.
And seconded. All those in favor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
One more comment I just wanted to make is that I, you know, I don't doubt that this, a little bit different with, with Snowden Community. They're an unincorporated area in the, in the county. They're not a town. Um, if this was a town of Jameson or any other town, I think they've got to stand up and act like a town. That's why I'm not in favor of this, but I, I think they should have some skin in the game. So, thank you.
All right. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay.
Nay.
Uh, let's, uh, do a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Darby?
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby is absent. Mrs. Honeycutt? I'm going to say is absent. Mr. Kebrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Prior?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Nay.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Um, the motion passes with four ayes, three nays, and two absent.
Thank you so much. Uh, item E.
Before we move on that, I just want to note, um, we are on 7B, correct?
7D as in dog.
Okay. Uh, you can also mark me as an aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Honeycutt?
All right. On 7E, move for approval.
Probably moved. Second.
And seconded. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Thank you so much. Uh, 7F, uh, if you have the QR code, that would take two seconds. Uh, Mr. Werman, who's a young person, would be able to help you.
His phones. I don't trust these things.
Chairman, can I?
Yes.
I would ask us to also make this part of the special committee on Tuesday with Mr. Darby being absent. I think.
All right. So yes, we would be glad to take that recommendation, sir, and Ms. Honeycutt will be present.
Right.
And so we will move, uh, 7F, if we can, to Tuesday's agenda. All right?
Mr. Chairman? Oh, you closed before I was, I was, I would like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On, on Tuesday.
We're going to start.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Prior?
What I would like to, on Tuesday, you know, I called you.
Mr. Prior, I'm sorry.
Called you, uh, earlier on yesterday to ask you about the, um, monies from the A, B, and D. And I thought that council was going to get together and make a decision on the allocation.
Yes.
And you told me something different today, so I'd like for us to maybe put it on the agenda for an executive session, since it's, uh, I think it, what a financial matter we need to discuss for Tuesday, so we can get some clarification.
All right. Ms. Hamm, is that something that can be discussed publicly, since the lawsuit has already been settled?
Uh, what I can do is perhaps get with Mr. Prior and yourself, Mr. Chairman, to figure out what it is we, we're looking to discuss.
Right.
If it is simply the allocation of.
It's just the allocation.
The funding. I think there's a mechanism in place for that, and if we want to get that started, I can try and have something prepared by Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you so much. And that can be a public conversation?
I, I believe so.
Thank you so much. We can do that publicly.
Mr. Chairman, before you close the meeting, I just want a clerk to note, um, for the record this evening, that not only was I present, I would like to be marked in the affirmative for all things on which I could have voted.